This is your first time at Planning Commission, please raise your hand. Okay, well, just a couple of highlights of what what's about to take place over the next couple of hours here at a Planning Commission meeting. First of all, thank you for being here and being a part of the public process. It's fantastic. And Planning Commission's received this packet in the mail before today's meeting. And and Planning Commission's had the opportunity to review it in advance in preparation of today's meeting. And so at times you will see that we move very quickly through the agenda. And so make sure that you've got a copy of the agenda in front of you and that you follow along really closely. In each case, I'll read off the case number, which is, which reads something like SD 2024-0025. If if you're interested in that case and you're here and you wish to speak in opposition, as I go through these, I will ask in every single case, is there any opposition present? If you're here and you want to speak in regards to the case, if you are not the applicant, then you have to raise your hand when I ask if there's any opposition present, because otherwise we may not have the opportunity to hear from you. In some cases, we will not have opposition, and we will also have a staff recommendation to approve. In most cases, when when that is the case, we will take action on it without hearing from anybody that's that's come today. So it's really important that when I ask if there's any opposition present, even if you don't necessarily think of yourself as opposition, but you've got some sort of questions or concerns, or you just want to make a statement, please make sure to raise your hand. The the order of things today will be that I'll read off the case number. I'll ask if there's any opposition. If there is, we'll hear the staff report, which we we have already seen. The applicant will go first. The applicant will have a total of nine minutes to present their case. The first seven will be that they'll have seven minutes to present the case. There sometimes is some conversation back and forth between the Planning Commission members and the applicant. There may be some questions, those sorts of things. After the applicant's finished, they'll sit down, stay close to the mic. But all of those who are here in opposition that wish to speak, you have to get out of your chair and come up and and line up on the right side of the room here behind the podium. My left, your right. It's important that you line up down that row there so that I can see how many people want to speak. Sometimes there's 20 people that want to speak in regards to one case, and the total time allotted for opposition is nine minutes. So what I have to do in that case is interrupt people and make sure to keep it moving along. I will say that it's most helpful to the Planning Commission if, when the opposition is sharing what it is they feel like we need to know in regards to the case that we haven't already been presented by staff. It's really important that what you're telling us is something that we haven't already heard. And so as an example, sometimes somebody will come up to the microphone. They'll state their name and address, and they'll tell us about some traffic concerns. And the very next person will get up and say the exact same thing and use two minutes to say the same thing. And the third person will get up and say the same thing. What's most helpful to us is to get new information with each person that's speaking in opposition to the case. After we've heard from opposition, they'll all take a seat, and the applicant will have two minutes to get up and respond to any points that have been brought to our attention by the opposition. It is important that when you come up to the microphone, that the red light is on here. It should be on when you come up. Make sure to state your name and address for the record. All the conversation that takes place today will be between the folks here on Planning Commission and the person at the microphone. So please make sure to direct any questions or comments to the Planning Commission. With that, one other thing is, I think there's an eclipse today. I've heard a lot about it. And so depending on where we are in this agenda and the timing of things, it has been discussed and agreed upon that we would take a recess from approximately 2:50 to 3:10. So that so that if you want to witness the eclipse, you can. And we'll not be meeting during that brief window. So maybe we'll be done by then.
We could.
It's it's unlikely. It only happens once in every like 70 years?
Yeah.
That we can get done in that amount of time?
We're pretty quick.
Like an eclipse. All right, with that, is is there anything else, Mr. Schultz?
I think you covered this.
Any withdrawals or anything like that?
Not that I'm aware of. Nobody's asked to withdraw or defer.
Okay. Oh, one other thing before I before I move on is that in most cases, we'll be making a recommendation today to the County Commission or the City Council in regards to the cases that we're hearing today. And so that's important, because if you wish to follow these cases further, you're gonna you're gonna see that they they're here at Planning Commission now, and then they're going to be at County Commissioner or City Council at some future date. So make sure to follow those dates closely so that you can know what's going on with the case.
Mr. Chairman, I may have missed something, but that that's only for zoning cases. So the municipal plan will stay here.
Yeah.
You may have said that. I'm sorry if you did.
I didn't, but thank you for clarifying. First case on our agenda, item one, SD 2024-0025 is preliminary plat at Stars Hollow, lots one through 74, and 101 through 105, located at 3132 Uwha Ringgold Road, and has a staff recommendation to approve. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? Well, in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case is SD 2024-0026, and this is a variance to the Hamilton County subdivision regulations. I'm not going to read all of that, but it is item two on our agenda, agenda in related to Eagles Crest subdivision, lots one through 17, and unaddressed Sawyer Cemetery Road, and it has a staff recommendation to approve. Is there any opposition present?
Mr. Chairman, we also did receive opposition emails in regards to this case. And I believe, I won't speak for opposition, but they got a letter from us in regards to the variance. But I think they're probably more opposed to the subdivision itself. Could be both, the variance and the subdivision, which is the next case, which is 27.
Okay. So that's, it's not uncommon for us to have opposition like that, where it's to more than one item on our agenda. So we we will rule on each one of these items independently, but we'll hear the cases together. So when you're here and you speak in opposition to one case, you're welcome to speak on both, and the same would go for the applicant. So with that, Mr. Schultz, can you present the staff report to us?
Yes, sir. And you should have in front of you the copies of the opposition emails and stuff that we received up until Friday. The first case is SD 2024-26. Again, this is a variance request to the Hamilton County subdivision regulations in terms of the streets being constructed in this development. Because of that variance, we had to notify property owners in 300 feet of this property. And I think that's where a lot of opposition is coming from. Is that variance? But I think it's probably more the plat. But this is the site. It's on Signal Mountain outside Incorporated area. You can see on the on the screen with the area highlighted in red, it says site. This property butts up to Harris Haven Drive, which is a private road. And just to the west, I think that's Falcon Crest is the name of the street. That's a public street. But this property will be developed for access off Harris Haven. The requests in front of you for variances are there are three of them. Section 402.1 of the Hamilton County subdivision regulations that requires any lots less than five acres, they must run a public road maintained by the county or on a private road built to county standards. Second variance request is to reduce the pavement from 26 feet to 22 feet. Then finally, the third variance is to request no curbing gutters. Because this is 21 lots, 19 of the lots are less than five acres. They would have to build this road to county standards. They're asking for those three variances, and you see on the screen to the right, that is the subdivision plat that was submitted. Here's a view of the Sawyer Road or Sawyer Cemetery Road heading towards Harris Haven. It's a very narrow road. I think I measured just on GIS anywhere from 15 to 16 feet. It's existing county road that the subdivision will be eventually connecting to. Harris Haven or the subdivision's just beyond this house in the picture down off the off the ridge, if you will. This is another view of Sawyer Road at Raptor's Roost intersection. Raptor's Roost is just to the left. We're continuing down Sawyer Cemetery Road towards Harris Haven, just showing again what the existing condition of the roads are that this subdivision will be connecting to. Another view, Harris Haven, just beyond that tree on the right-hand side. Here's the intersection of Harris Haven that's going down to this subdivision. And this is Harris Haven Drive that will connect to this subdivision, Harris Haven Drive against private. It was built, I think the intention back then was to dedicate that to the county, but it was never accepted by the county as a public road because it was never inspected during instruct construction. There's some issues with probably topography on the road. It's right at the threshold of 15%. So it never was accepted by the county back when this was constructed, but it is a private drive today. Here's another view, just aerial view, trying to show you what Harris Haven Drive is. Just bottom of the little dot that says Harris Haven is a cul-de-sac. That's where this subdivision will be extended from. This is a map showing you there's 21 lots. The the dots in red are the two lots in this subdivision that are over five acres. So the other lots are roughly from 1.6 acres all the way up to three and four acres. So because of that, they're dropping below five acres. Again, the road has to be built to county standards, or you seek a variance. They're seeking a variance, again, to this five-acre rule, to reduce the pavement from 26 feet to 22 feet and to not do curbing gutters. If this had come in with all the lots over five acres in size, there wouldn't be a need for the variance. That plat would still be reviewed by this Planning Commission, but they can build the road to any standard they wish because there are no private road standards for private roads in the county. And with that, staff looked at this, including the fire marshal. Fire marshal was okay with the variances as long as they do 26 feet in pavement width where the fire hydrants are installed, but they were good with the 22 feet of pavement width. A similar variance was granted many years ago by the Planning Commission of Roberts Mill. So we've had very similar requests as this. Staff looked at this and reviewed and provides a recommendation to approve the variance request for all three variances. And here's the subdivision plat. Again, staff, the plat meets the requirements if the variances for the streets are granted. So staff would recommend approval only if the variances are approved.
Mr. Schultz, I I heard you say that if the applicant had been looking, if 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 all of these lots were over five acres, then there there would have been no need for a variance.
Correct.
And the preliminary plat would, how would how would it change?
Plat would still be required because they are extending utilities in a road. That would still be required to come through review. But the road, since it's a private road, there are no standards for the private road. But because it's dropping below the five-acre rule, it has to meet county standards. But if it doesn't five-acre tracks, you can just do a plat like we always see every month, would have been approved.
Got you. Okay.
Just just correction. There are fire code requirements on roads, so they do have to meet the fire code for private roads. But but that's not a 26, so that does change a little bit. If you do five-acre lots or more, you do not have to meet the subdivision regulations for private roads, but you do need.
Yeah. And I think it's about pavement thickness. Has to withstand a certain size fire truck and.
Yeah, the fire code's, I think, 20 or 22 feet wide, 26 at the. So so there are some different, some differences, but they do have to meet fire code.
And the fire marshal in this case, he was good as long as where the fire hydrants are, you widen that to 26 feet. I think it's 30 feet within those fire hydrants. So provide that spacing for the fire trucks.
Any other questions for staff before we hear from the applicant? Is the applicant present? Can you come on up?
I do. My name is John Mitchum. I'm a resident of Signal Mountain. I'm also a property owner at 981 Sawyer Cemetery Road, just at the end of Sawyer Cemetery. With me today is Jay Floyd Reagan Smith. He's the engineer who put together the plat for us to take a look at today. Overall, Eagles Crest owns an 88-acre parcel here at the end of Sawyer Cemetery Road. The intention in 2008, as Brian alluded to, was to dedicate Harris Haven Drive as a public roadway. Through happenstance and administrative dealings, it was not on the agenda, unfortunately for the Hamilton County Commission, to vote on its ordinance and acceptance as a public road. We were unaware of that until 2018, and we began a campaign with County Road Department, Hamilton County Commission in order to have Harris Haven Drive accepted as a public roadway. Unfortunately, it was not. The codes accepted in 2012 had other requirements from the 2008 specs that the road was built to, so we were unable to get it accepted. We today accepted as a private road, and we think we have designed a subdivision in accordance with and in keeping with that private road idea. The limitations that we see are Sawyer Cemetery Road, which Brian alluded to and showed you photographs of. It is narrow, but it is the county road and county maintained road. It's an irony, actually, that the Harris Haven Drive, our private road, acts more like a public road than Sawyer Cemetery does. But with that in mind, we have designed a neighborhood with large lots, low density in in accordance with the limitations of that Sawyer Cemetery Road. The lot size is important to us. Less than five acres is a necessary part of what we try to accomplish at the what we call Long Point. It's down at the bottom of the subdivision. You'll notice there a cluster of higher-density lot sizes there, least of which I think is 1.6 acres. All of that acreage is in keeping with the other neighborhoods in the area, which are Falcon Bluff, Raptor's Roost, Harrier Hill. These are also Eagles Crest neighborhoods, and we're well aware of the densities there. And this is less than many of the densities in the area, including Grey Hawk Trails, another of the Eagles Crest neighborhoods. But down at Long Point, we think those are brow lots and worthy of brow views. It's a geographic promontory out in the middle of the valley there that really lends best and highest and best use in in lot usage and home building as brow lots looking out into the valley. Otherwise, the other brow lots, you'll notice, are 4.8, 4.7, 4.6, very close and in keeping with that five-acre minimum. The the idea there is to create estate lots. And in general, what we did was looked at the very best build sites there and then put lot lines around them. Unfortunately, that was less than five acres, but we think that the the value of the road and the value of the lots there would certainly justify putting lot lines where we found them. And the the roadway, our variance for that, we think, again, is in keeping. We're not seeking a larger road. We're not seeking more curbs, gutters, or others. We're we're seeking less impact on the environment, less impact in the community, and also in keeping with the size of Sawyer Cemetery Road. 22 feet, we think, is adequate for for passage. The community that would be built on that 22-foot road would be a gated community. It would have a gate. No other further intentioned bypassers would be coming down to that area unless they had a gate code or some other purpose there. I think that's pretty much any questions that you might have for either myself or the or the engineer.
Any questions for the applicant, Mr. Liam?
Just just to see if you did the exercise. So so 21 lots. And granted, a lot of them, I guess, the brow lots are close to five acres. I I was curious if you'd gone through an exercise to look at. Because you wouldn't need, if if you had five-acre lots or more, you wouldn't need, you wouldn't be asking for variances. So I was just curious if you had a lot count relative to meeting a five-acre minimum.
Five acre would be 17.6 lots. What we're asking for is 21. That's 3.4 additional lots. And really, that is because of the cluster of lots down at Long Point. If we were to request even one, as I understand, even one lot less than five acres down at Long Point, it would require a variance. So therefore, if we're going for a variance anyway, let's create the lots down there that we think are reasonable. Overall, we think it's a reasonable and even responsible approach to to development there, low-density, large estate lots.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I I was looking for that count relative. So so 17 and 17 by right. I mean, state law allows you to to subdivide greater than five acres, and then there's some subdivision regulations that allow that also. So your set 17 would allow that by right, and you you're asking for 21. Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, we'll hear from opposition, and you'll have the opportunity to respond. If you're here and you're in opposition and you wish to speak, come on up. Reminder to state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Susan Conrad. I live at 821 Wellstone Drive in Chattanooga. And I'm here today as a certified planner representing the property owners in that area. The residents have requested that the waiver be denied, and the reason is the variance has been used to decrease lot size. The main concern is, once variance is granted, individual lots can be further divided into more lots. And the underlying R1 zone allows lots of 6,000 square feet in size. Up to five lots can further than be divided and be approved by staff for each individual lot. We feel that the variance is circumventing the restriction of the number of lots allowed on a private easement. And again, the additional lots will have a detrimental impact on the road surface. Also, there's the lift condition request, which I believe you have in Chattanooga, which could be used to further circumvent the requirements of this subdivision. And also, the waiver is circumventing the provision of a public street. Those are the comments that I have on the waiver. I will have additional comments as far as the actual subdivision. Thank you.
Can you go ahead and speak on that now? Because we're gonna we're gonna hear opposition on on both.
The Hamilton County Comprehensive Plan does not have an adopted plan for Planning Area 7. The public hearings for that plan were canceled without explanation to the residents. The planning process appears to be stalled at this point, and the citizens have not had the their input regarding what future development will occur. The plan needs to be completed to guide planning decisions. While there is no specific plan for Planning Area 7, the text of the Comprehensive Plan has been adopted and can be used as a basis for planning decisions. The proposed subdivision conflicts with several goals of the Hamilton County Planning, Hamilton County Comprehensive Plan. Goal three, creating healthy communities that protect hillsides and wooded areas. And goal four, creating safe communities with sidewalks and streets. The development also conflicts with development intensity level one and level two for rural areas. Level one is within the 88-acre site, includes environmentally sensitive area and steep slopes. Level two of the area surrounding the site and includes networks, road networks that do not support development and have limited sewer connectivity. The issue four is, when the R1 zone was adopted, the adjoining property owners were not notified of that change. The density of this urban zone, and I say urban because in other zoning ordinance, it's usually considered a 6,000-square-foot lot is found within the urban core. The density of the this urban zone, overdeveloped topography of the site, density of the R1 zone will further develop development of the site once the waiver is granted. And newer, lower-density zones, I feel, should be added to the Comprehensive Plan and the zoning ordinance for development in areas challenged by topography in these rural areas. The residents also request that development be denied because it eliminates woodland. Additional traffic will impact pedestrian safety, and as there are no sidewalks and the road narrows down to 13 feet, where residents are finding that they have to basically jump out of the way of passing cars because cars have to pull off the road in order for another to pass from the other direction. And also, in regards to the notification policy, I'd like to conclude that with notification being made by newspaper, that's no longer really relevant in this day and age. Joining property owners should be notified by first-class mail, which can be as a cost passed on through to the developer. As a planning professional, I've found that in preparation of cases that were going for subdivision, that this was not an owner's expense to pass on, and it created transparency for the citizens and the adjoining property owners. I highly recommend it, and I hope you will follow suit with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Come on up.
Good afternoon. Paul Newborn. I live at 1026 Sawyer Cemetery Road. A couple of key points. The commentary that the road is roughly 14 to 16 feet is partially correct. The road is roughly 19 feet, narrows to 16 feet, narrows to 13 feet for the last 600 yards or so. And then it connects to Harris Haven. The the previous comments are applicable. There's a safety risk. All the neighbors have children, for the most part. Many of us have dogs. We walk our dogs. We jog. Kids ride their bikes along the last 1,600 feet of that road, which is where the narrowest portions of the road are. Todd knows very well. We've had past issues with speeding on that portion of the road. The county has attempted to use signage to correct the problem. That has not solved the problem. The sheriff's office has attempted to provide increased patrols, but that also has not solved the problem. Our primary concern, and we had 35 property and homeowners sign a letter asking that the variance be denied. Their main concern is safety along that road and the increased traffic and concerns with the condition of the infrastructure. If you've been on the road, it's cracking, and some places the sides are falling off. There's potholes. Obviously, increased traffic is only going to accelerate that. The, we understand that the subdivision has has been previously requested. Our concern is with increasing the density. We are also concerned with the deforestation. It's changing the nature of the area, increasing traffic and increasing the risk to the people who use that road in a pedestrian status. The comment about the other subdivisions in the area being similar is partially correct. The main difference is they are off main roads. They're off Sawyer Road or they're off Roberts Mill Road. Both are county-spec roads, heavily traveled, highly maintained. This is off a private dead-end road that narrows in length as you get to the end of it. So we would ask that the request be denied. We think that five-acre lots are ample size for that area. It's in keeping with the neighborhood. It will help uphold the valuations of the homes and keep the tax basis at an appropriate level with the other homes. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. There's just a few minutes remaining, but come on up.
Afternoon. I'm Daniel Cronk. I live at 1006 Sawyer Cemetery Road. I'm actually at the White House that you can see there as you progress on these, on the pictures there. And the road is just exactly about 13 feet wide in front of my house. And I'm just concerned about the amount of traffic that this subdivision that's going to be constructed there. And I had talked to the developer. When you think about 30 households, when you add up the households that are already there, they're going to be filtering through this 500-some feet on a daily basis. There's inevitably going to be conflicts between cars here when they can only go in one lane. There's a ditch on one side and my front yard on the other side. So it just seems like there's going to be safety issues and the amount of traffic through there. People are potentially going to be pulling off onto my front yard. The only other alternative is to widen that road, which I don't see as a good alternative because it's going to take up probably a third of my front yard to do so. And I would think it would just destroy my property value and probably decrease the safety even further, bring all that traffic even closer to my front yard. And if you look back at the plats and the initial drawings back even to 1989, there were a plan to actually bring the subdivision in and out of Falcon Bluff, which goes through proper two-lane roads. And at some point, they decided to go through and pave Raptor's Roost, which I can understand the way that they would want to do that because it was already graded and dirt road. And I talked to John Mitchum about this, and he said the engineering just wasn't favorable to go through Falcon Bluff. But you can walk on a trail down through that area. And I would ask the developer to readdress this because it would be a much better solution to bring the traffic from this neighborhood in and out of an area that's already paved with two roads, with two-lane roads, and it would completely avoid this one-lane portion of Sawyer Cemetery Road right in front of my property. I just don't see that there's really any way, good way out of this for me and my property, and that's why. And that's why I'm here today. And I would ask them to readdress another egress because there is a possible another egress to this proposed development is the way I see it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The applicant can come back up.
Thank you. John Mitchum here again with Jay Floyd. Thank you to the residents for coming today. We have met with, spoken with personally and on phone calls with many of them. And we have been in receipt of the petition with names, numbers and expression of concerns for safety. We also have a concern for safety. We recognize the limitation of the road itself. However, our variance is not for Sawyer Cemetery Road. That, that is a bottleneck. We agree. But our variance is for the roadway down below, which we intend to continue on in the large lot, low density, what I consider a reasonable approach to planning and development there. The concerns for safety and speed, we have addressed in some ways with the residents. We have proposed being in control of the contractors, for example, who may be working in the neighborhood. And in order to mitigate their speeds, impose a safety training course and courtesy in the neighborhood, but also any kind of penalty or could be fired in the case of reports that come. So we're exhibiting some sort of management plan for, for the heavy traffic that's expected and anticipated. Concerning a few of these other items which they have mentioned, the, the ability to further divide the subdivision, this is the extent of Eagles Crest property. We do not own property beyond this and we don't anticipate any other lots coming off of this road. Indeed, the design of the roadway is to dead end and stop at Long Point. And there would be no other road that would come off of that. Also, any other further subdivision would require a variance request and another hearing just like this. Also, the limitations on that would be the soil, which would determine whether or not an acre, you know, another acre lot could be cut in. And we intend to impose covenants and restrictions that would restrict further subdivision of these subdivision lots. The sidewalks, we, we do not have plans for sidewalks on our private road. Other neighborhoods in the area do not also have sidewalks. It's consistent with that. Density wise, other comparatives in the neighborhood, the other Eagles Crest neighborhoods, in fact, density calculations at units per acre at Falcon Bluff at point five nine, Raptor's Roost at point four six, Greyhawk Trails at point eight four. Our neighborhood is at point two, three units per acre, which we think is reasonable and less than, and at least consistent with the rest of the neighborhoods in the area. We feel for Dr. Cronk and we feel for Paul Newbern. And we feel for all of those lot owners on the right-hand side of the right-of-way going in. Their front yards are at risk. There's, there's no doubt. In, in the case of an expanded Sawyer Cemetery Road, there are crepe myrtles, driveways, playgrounds, sidewalks, everything is gonna be at risk to them. We understand that and that's part of the reason we're building to this variance is a twenty-two-foot road, which is more consistent with Sawyer Cemetery Road. Any other?
Oh, the last point about coming in at the end of, what's that road? Falcon Bluff. Yeah, that, that would be a great solution, except it's just extremely steep and not feasible. The topography doesn't warrant it. So that's why there's a cul-de-sac there at the end of it.
Thank you. All right. Are there any questions for the applicant? Yes, sir. And then Councilman Ledford.
Just one question. Have you all talked with the residents, community meeting of any kind?
We haven't held a community meeting. Thank you, sir. But we have spoken with residents. I've reached out myself to twenty, approximately twenty, some of which are on the petition list, some of which are not. Some in favor of the development plan as it is, others who are opposed, mostly opposed. The, the concerns that they express are for safety, as we understand and we feel a part of. I myself am a resident or I have a lot there as well. I feel the same. But our job is not for law enforcement. We have spoken with the Sheriff's Department. Paul Newbern also has been a vocal proponent for safety on the road, which we agree with. We, we would love to see more rumble strips, signs, speed management devices installed there. We, we think it would be an excellent idea. We've met with our county commissioner, who likewise agrees and has invited a meeting with Sheriff's Department in order to discuss those items.
Councilman Ledford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jay, this is for you. Go back, Brian, a couple of slides for me. I just wanna make sure I understand the full picture because I'm not, I think I'm getting pieces of it. Keep going. Keep going. Keep going. So this road here, is this the road that's being proposed to be widened or corrected or?
No, sir. The subdivision is accessed off Harris Haven Road, which comes off of Sawyer Cemetery Road currently.
So, okay, here's what I'm trying to check to ask. Will construction eighteen-wheelers carrying cement trucks be going down this, this road?
They will. That's, that's exactly right.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the road just a little bit and chuckle because.
Well, but you realize this is gonna be custom houses. It's not like you're gonna be building six or eight or ten houses at a time. So that should limit somewhat the construction traffic. But certainly they'll have to travel down that road to build the subdivision, to build the houses.
But, but in all fairness to the applicant, I'm not necessarily defending them, but if Jay wants to buy a tandem dump truck and spend all day, every day driving it up and down this road today, he, I think, can do that.
It's a county.
I mean, it would be a very expensive hobby, but theoretically it is a county road.
I understand. So, and that leads me to my next question. So when this road inevitably will be destroyed, what is the county's response to that? And I don't mean to put you on the spot.
We own and operate public roads on in Corvina County. So we would, we would have to make sure that it's accessible to the public, just like we do with all the other eight hundred, eight hundred miles.
Okay. And, and I kinda wanted to ask that question so that we could get that out, that the county would respond to that when that road becomes.
Let me only add that, I mean, you have a private property owner that owns property at the end of an existing public road. It's been a public road for a long time. So they have certain rights relative to subdivision of the property. And I think that was a little bit to some of the, some of the conversation related to variance and right. But, but there are, there are county roads that are narrow that development happens on. You can see a couple of houses in this picture that were developed on, on that same road.
One last question for Jay. The county's right-of-way on either side of this road, what is that?
Yeah, it's a fifty-foot right-of-way. So.
Are you asking about this road or their road? This road probably does not have right-of-way in a lot of areas.
Okay.
He's, he's still asking about Sawyer Cemetery.
I'm, I'm on the cemetery road. Yeah, I'm seeing there could, no way there could be fifty feet. You'd be inside this one house.
Yes, sir. The, the plants up and down Sawyer Cemetery Road indicate fifty feet right-of-way, both on the left-hand side and the right-hand side of Sawyer Cemetery Road.
Yeah, and I measured this morning. It's, it's, it changes when you go down Sawyer Cemetery. But it's anywhere from roughly, this, I'm just using GIS based. It was roughly forty-five foot right-of-way in some areas.
Let me just comment that GIS is not an indicator of private property ownership in the county.
It's not. Correct.
Mr. Payne?
Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
I just wanna make sure I under, I think Todd was saying this a minute ago. I wanna make sure I understand this. Had they opted to do five acre lots, they would not be here right now or wouldn't have to be here right now. They could do seventeen lots by right.
They, they would still, they would still be asking for a preliminary plat.
They would be in front of this body.
But they would not be asking.
We have to approve it if it meets the criteria that set forth by the state. So in essence, we've given a plat, they, they would get their seventeen lots. We're, this is about four lots is basically what this is. Is that correct, roughly?
Yes, correct.
That is right.
Okay, so the other thing that I, they brought up something that is, would it be possible? Could we condition this approval that lots could not be further divided?
I don't think, can we condition a preliminary?
I think the deed restrictions would be the better way to, the covenants restriction would be the better way to go. If they, somebody bought one of these lots and wanted to further subdivide that, that would have to come back through this body for the variance to create another lot.
But they could do it with their deed.
They could. Those are private matters, of course, but.
Mr. Lynn, let me, let me just confirm what you said, Brian. So since it's a, since it's less than five acre lots on a private drive that's not built to county standards, they couldn't, someone could not come in, buy, I mean, I understand they can put covenants and restrictions, but somebody could not come in, somebody could come in and buy a lot and petition for a variance to set. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that it would be the same conversation we're having now with, with somebody else.
Yeah, we see these every month in front of this body. Somebody's done that.
On my day, it would also have to meet the set requirements.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you all.
Thank you.
We do have two cases here in front of us, the first of which is S D twenty twenty-four dash zero zero two six. And this is a variance from the Hamilton County subdivision regulations, lots one through seventeen on unaddressed Sawyer Cemetery Road. And it has a staff recommendation to approve what's will the commission. Motion to approve. And it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right. How many noes were there? Just the three motion carries. Thank you all. Next item on our agenda is S D twenty twenty-four dash zero zero two seven. It's preliminary plat. And it's the Eagle Crest subdivision lots one through seventeen on unaddressed Sawyer Cemetery Road. And staff is recommended to approve with conditions. What's will the commission? Mr. Payne, you, you really do have to make this motion.
Well, the condition was approved the plat based on the variances. The variances approved with the plat.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you all. Next case on the agenda is S D twenty twenty-four dash zero zero two eight. And this is a final plat for cottages at Thrasher Pike, Phase Two, lots one through six, forty-two through eighty-five, and a community lot, one A, fifty-four A and seventy-eight A, located at nineteen zero one Thrasher Pike and unaddressed properties on Thrasher Pike. Staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present? What's will the commission? We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case is S D twenty twenty-four dash zero zero two nine. It's preliminary plat for still need subdivision. Lots one through one zero eight, located at eighty-four seventeen Old B Highway and eighty-four twenty-eight Hart Lane. Staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present? What's will the, we have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case, item six on our agenda is S D twenty twenty-four dash zero zero three zero. This is preliminary and final plat for Glenwood Drive subdivision. Lots one through seven located at nine twelve Glenwood Drive and has a staff recommendation to approve. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case is S D twenty twenty-four dash zero zero three one. It's preliminary and final plat for Sawyer Farms. Lots one through fourteen located at sixty-eight zero eight Sawyer Road. Staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight on our agenda, case S D twenty twenty-four dash zero zero three two. This is final plat for Hampton Village subdivision, lots one through twelve, located at seven six two zero Snow Hill Road. Staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine on our agenda, case S D twenty twenty-four dash zero zero three three is preliminary plat for Nature's Cove subdivision, lots one through two zero one, community lots one eighty-six, two zero three through two zero six, two zero eight through two eleven, utility lots two zero two and two twelve, located at eight two zero nine Bell Mill Road. Staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present? And is the applicant present? Thank you. Mr. Schultz?
Sure. And before we get started, in the staff report for this plat, we, I had, I copied the wrong address. It's actually one, it's not the one thousand block of Sawyer Cemetery. That's been corrected. It is Bell Mill Road, eighty-two oh nine Bell Mill Road. So your staff report, it does say Sawyer Cemetery. Apologize. On the screen is the aerial view of this property. You may remember of this property from, I guess, last year, we had a rezoning request to rezon this A one to R one. That was ultimately denied the county commission. I don't remember if it was withdrawn, but I know it never got approved. So it's A one today. You see Bell Mill just to your south. Just showing, because I know this is gonna come up. I have some pictures here of the intersection of Bell Mill and Hunter Road. This is Bell Mill in the center. Hunter Road's just to the right, that sharp turn to the right of the screen, heading towards the subdivision. This is another view looking at Bell Mill towards the Hunter Road intersection. This is Bell Mill Road at the Mountain Pass intersection. See the Mountain Pass intersection coming in the right-hand screen by the picture. Closer view of Bell Mill, a Mountain Pass intersection. This is looking at Bell Mill towards Snow Hill. The site's on your left-hand side. Again, continuing down Bell Mill towards Snow Hill Road, the site's on your left-hand side. Another view of Bell Mill, sites on the left-hand side. This property does have some flood hazard area located on it. The lighter blue is the floodway. You cannot get up in the floodway. And the lot, the darker blue is the hundred-year flood hazard area. You can develop in that as long as you elevate above the base flood elevation. So it does have some challenges in terms of floodway on the property, but this is very typical in this county where you have floodway and flood plains. Just some clarification points here too. The minimum lot size on sewers in the A one zone is seventy-five hundred square foot and sixty foot on lot, on lot frontage. If you're on sewers, A one has a maximum density of two dwelling units per acre. Density, based on the county zoning code, is the number dwelling units per acre. The density is calculated by dividing the number of dwelling units by the total acreage of the site. So it's gross, not net. Based on the site plan or actually subdivision plat submitted, there's two hundred and twelve total lots within this development. Breaking that down further, there's ten community lots and two utility lots. That leaves two hundred residential lots. If you take that two hundred residential lots and divide that by the gross acreage of a hundred point six three total acreage, that's a density of one point nine eight. So it does comply with A one maximum density, the way it's currently written today in our, in our zoning code. Here's a view of the overall index. There's so many sheets involved with this plat. I have one overall view and the red dots indicate the community lots within this subdivision. You see they're scattered throughout the subdivision, mostly due to the location of the drainage and detention ponds. And the yellow dots, there's two of them. Those are utility lots. I assume that's for W W T A pump stations or some type of facility with that. This subdivision does have two entrances off Bell Mill. You can see those ones are located here. Other entrances are located here. Bell, Bell Road does not connect. I think some years ago, this is washed out because of the stream that comes through here. So it doesn't connect. So all this traffic is flowing back out to the Hunter Road intersection. With, with the review, the lots meet the lot brunch, lot size, does meet the subdivision requirements. So staff recommends to approve the preliminary plat as submitted. I got a lot of sheets on here if you wanna go through each one of them, but it's so hard to see because of so many sheets. But it does meet the requirements as submitted. And again, staff recommends to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Any questions for staff before we hear from the opposition? All right. We'll hear from the opposition i- if you're here and you wish to speak. As you're coming up, I will just remind you that if the applicant in regards to a. applicant in regards to a preliminary plat presents staff with a preliminary plat that adheres to our subdivision regulations, then this body has to approve it.
That's correct.
And this does.
And the opposition, Mr. Bowles, it's, he's sending an email, opposition. I think you all have that sent out to you all. So you should have his comments as well. That, I think, everything he's sending out.
Okay, I have passed out a, a graphic for you to look at that you can refer to as I get a little bit further into this. My name is Gary Bowles, fifty-eight twelve Mountain Pass Drive in Udoa.
Mr. Bowles, let me interrupt one time real quick. Just want to make sure you understood what I said earlier. And that is that if, if a property owner makes a preliminary plat application to the planning commission and that preliminary plat has, has been reviewed by staff and has been determined to meet the subdivision regulations, then this body has to approve it.
I guess I don't understand why you even consider it then, but I still wish to speak.
Thank you.
Fifty-eight twelve Mountain Pass Drive in Udoa, Gary Bowles. I ask you to remember that my understanding is you have discretion as you consider the subdivision plat. My property backs up to the subdivision, so I as well. Several other neighbors are concerned about this development. We live in Mountain Pass subdivision, a fifty acre subdivision with thirty-eight homes in it. There's about four other homes directly on Bell Mill Road, on down the road. My objection, objections to this subdivision boil down to these primary categories of concern. First is safety. County government acknowledges that Hunter Road has an accident rate nine times of that of the average road in Hamlin County. The Hunter Bell Mill Road hundred and twenty degree intersection is very difficult for vehicles to navigate. With the current forty-two homes, assuming about two houses, two cars per household, that's eighty-four cars plus service vehicles. We estimate about a hundred and fifty vehicles a day that go through our subdivision. Now it's proposed to add about two hundred more homes. That'd be four hundred cars. And when you add service vehicles like garbage trucks, Uber, FedEx, UPS, all that sort of thing. You may have as many as seven hundred vehicles in a day that will go through here. That's a five hundred percent increase on this road. Traveling from the proposed subdivision down winding narrow Bell Mill Road toward the Mountain Pass Drive intersection, one encounters deep ditches and a steep downhill bron curve. It's hard to see cars at the subject intersection, even when traveling at the posted twenty-five mile per hour speed limit. And we all know how that works in our county. Just past this is the treacherous and difficult to navigate intersection with Hunter Road. We believe serious accidents, including fatalities, are going to occur at both intersections. The plat does not meet fire code. The diagonal difference, distance across the property is thirty-five hundred feet approximately. And the distance between the entrances is about twelve hundred and fifty feet, and that's five hundred feet short of the required distance. This alone should send the applicant back to the drawing board. Second area is flooding and flood insurance concerns. There's language in comprehensive plan twenty thirty that was approved in two thousand and six that says, quote, as part of the FEMA, the National Flood Insurance Program encourages local governments to reduce development activity in the hundred year flood plain. So eighteen years ago, we realized that continued development, which disturbs floodways and floodplain, will likely result in placing the NFIP on probation or even losing it altogether, which would seriously stifle development and place homeowners at risk for substantial losses. We think this constitutes a systemic lack of regard for flood protection and may require legal action to address. Currently, our county does not qual, even qualify for discounts because compliance with the NFIP is minimal. This subdivision plat in question has a hundred and two acres, but only about thirty percent is developable as is. Many lots have been designated as community lots, as you mentioned. One of them's a sixteen and a half acre floodway, floodway, and then twenty-six and a half acres that are going to be filled in. It's currently floodplain more later. As you know, the county commission adopted the Wolf Teaver Plan. It may be outdated, but it's still in effect. And although dated, I cannot imagine that the language that protects waterways would change dramatically and may even be strengthened. It states that, quote, "Special care should be taken not to disturb the natural stream by floodplain and course of the waterway," unquote. This plat has over sixteen acres in the floodway. It currently shows about sixty homes with substantial portions in the hundred year floodplain. And you can see that on the diagram that I showed you. Well, I'll talk more later, but eliminated. It's not only going to be disturbed, it's going to be eliminated. That floodplain will be eliminated because they're going to fill it in. And that's a very important buffer known as the floodplain. The third, third item is housing density. Imagine if you will that I bought a thousand acres and I had a nine hundred acre lake in the middle of the thousand acres. So using the two homes per acre rule, I could build two thousand homes on a hundred acres. Does that make sense to you? Does it make sense to me? Please look at the map I handed out. This shows the plat and superimposed is the twenty eighteen survey by the applicant map engineers. You can see how many houses are either in the floodplain or in areas where the floodplain's being filled in. Yes, density is being interpreted such that density is calculated by the number of homes divided by the area of the project, quote unquote. Without filling in part of the floodplain, there's only thirty-one acres of developable land. They plan to fill in twenty-six of the floodplain. So now we have two hundred homes on fifty-seven acres. And note, there's a six acre power line easement. So that's fifty-one acres now. That's about three and a half homes per acre, far above the two homes per acre. In order to comply with Wolf Teaver guidance, the floodplain should not be disturbed. So two hundred homes should certainly not be allowed.
Sir, I want to make sure to give the individual behind you.
We're coordinated. We are coordinated.
Okay.
We acknowledge that this developer's labeled nine months, nine lots as community lots, and there's some utility lots, too. But the largest is a sixteen and a half acre floodway. Others are either stormwater basins, which amount to about two acres, and there's a few oddly shaped lots. Note that this density is certainly inconsistent with housing density of all houses on or off Bell Mill Road. Mountain Pass has thirty-eight homes on fifty acres. The other handful of homes are very, very large lots. We do not think this density is consistent with harmonious development within the community. My desires is plat be rejected and land allowed to be remain in its pristine condition. If this preliminary plat is allowed to move forward for final approval, those following conditions should be put in place. Bell Mill Road should be fixed so it's safe for both the new residents and the existing residents. That includes widening it all the way to Hunter Road, addressing the Mountain Pass intersection with stop signs, fixing the obtuse Bell Mill Hunter Road intersection. Mayor Womp in his recent State of the County address said, "We should lean into our strength for prominent people to things in cooperation with government to improve the county and not just for the benefit of excessive profits." Maybe our successful builders in cooperation with county government should lean into this. Recently, we approved a large community, a senior living community right off Snow Hill Road. They estimate three to four million dollars of tax revenue. Maybe we should use some of that. The number of houses should be limited to sixty-two to comply with the two homes per acre based on thirty-one acres of developable land and not the aggregate acreage interpreted, interpretation that builders prefer. If you allow to fill inland, the number of houses should be limited to a hundred and two homes and not one more. All agencies reviewing this preliminary plat should scrutinize it with extra diligence to prevent flooding issues that have been associated with this developer in the past. Potential loss of flood insurance, fire code violations, sewer capacity, waterway disturbance, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So all the time for opposition was used by.
Used at all?
Mr. Bowles, he did, yes. I actually, you know, if, if you'll remember about two and a half minutes ago, I interrupted him to give you the opportunity to speak. He said you were a coordinated effort and you confirmed by shaking your head. So I do apologize.
I concur.
But you could introduce yourself. You have come. So please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Joe Dana. I live at fifty-eight, fifty-eight ten Mountain Pass Drive. I am a lawyer. I'm a retired lawyer. I wrote about twenty years ago. I wrote with the help of the state of Georgia, I wrote the Walker County Land Use Planning Ordinance, which is comparable to yours. My comments would have been related to out of control development in Udoa and Georgetown area. I would not have repeated the.
We, we do have time on our agenda at the end for public comment on non-agenda items. If you'd like to hang around till then and make those comments.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant, we didn't give the applicant time to speak.
No.
And I will say before he comes up, I did fail to mention the applicant is along the property they own, along Bell Mill Road. They are dedicating additional land and making road improvements along Bell Mill. Only in front of the property they own. They don't own all the way out to the intersection of Hunter Road and Bell Mill. They cannot fix that issue. That's a county issue that had to be addressed by the county departments.
Thank you. So, Mr. Price, thank you for being here, and I'm sure there'll be plenty of questions for you, but I did want to just say something before we jump into that. And that is that a lot of the comments that we just heard are not uncommon in regards to us hearing them. It not, not just on this case, but other cases. And, you know, I, I wasn't taking notes quick enough to, to even get them all down, but I do think it's important that we respond to a lot of them because there are a lot of misconceptions, you know, in regards to how development takes place, why it's allowed to take place, and what purview we are given in regards to things like you said at the end, which is here's all this additional tax revenue. And, and this money should be put into, to infrastructure and improvements. Those aren't decisions we make, you know. So, so I wish we could just pick it apart piece by piece because I do think it's so important for the public to understand that a floodplain is a private property. It is not public property. It's private property. And in Hamilton County and in the state of Tennessee, if a private property owner owns a floodplain, irregardless of everything that you just said, that private property owner is allowed with permits to fill that flood, floodplain. In Hamilton County, every single time, I've been planning commission chair for, I want to say nine years, I think, maybe ten. For a very, very long time, even before I was planning commission chair, the way that we calculate the developable area when it comes to a zoning case has always been the same. It's a hundred percent consistent. In this case, it is taking the total area of land that's held by a private property owner and dividing it by the number of developed lots. That doesn't change. In this case, this subdivision plat meets that regulation in terms of what's being proposed, this one point nine eight. We could go through it case by case. Before this meeting ever took place, all of these documents were reviewed by RPA staff and county engineers to verify that this plat would meet all of the regulations that we have in place. So here in just a minute, we're going to have a conversation with Mike Price. But I'm telling you where that conversation's going. This planning commission is going to approve this variance, I mean, this, this preliminary plat. Not because we haven't heard your comments and not because we don't think your concerns are real. Because we, we don't necessarily argue your comments. The reality is that what the applicant has done is submitted a preliminary plat that meets every single regulation that we have in the state of Tennessee and in Hamilton County. And if they submit a plat that meets the regulations, then we approve it. So with that, I will open it up for the applicant. I don't, I don't know that he would have much to add. Well, I wouldn't necessarily disagree with you. There is a process beyond here, and that is the courts. And, and that's a perfectly, I guess, acceptable solution as well. But, Mr. Price?
Thank you. Mike Price, M A P engineer. So to your point, Mr. Chairman, this does meet the subdivision guidelines and regulations. And if you remember, and I'm sure opposition should remember as well, when this case came before you originally, it was a putt. And what I stated is, is that we would look at working at the intersection of Hunter Road and Bell Mill Road to improve it. All we were looking for was to gain about another twenty homes that would give us the financial wherewithal to make those improvements at that intersection. The community gambled and bet that if we were turned down, it wouldn't go through. And I told them at the community meeting, and I told them at county commission, we could do two hundred homes by right, and we would do that. We're here today. We're doing exactly what I told them. So this should be no shock to them because we said, look, we'll, we'll, we'll do our two hundred home subdivision. And the improvements as it relates to Hunter Road and Bell Mill Road, that's now in the county's responsibility. So we're widening Bell Mill Road. We're meeting all the subdivision requirements. The fire marshal has signed off and agreed that the access is adequate. So we made all the requirements. I don't know of anything else really to discuss as I see it because all the tenants have been met. If there's any questions, happy to answer those.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Councilman Ledford?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It was stated that the distance between the entrances was not adequate to meet the subdivision regulations. Can you address that?
So what you're referring to is international fire code. If you read the international fire code, it talks about that the separation between driveways be one half the diagonal distance. It's a long formula or a long description that ultimately, I don't know who came up with, but it's, it's rather laborious. But if you also read sprinkled throughout the entire international fire code, in every single section, it also says the fire marshal has the ability to also approve anything else they want in any manner that they seem to feel is appropriate. I have an email that states from the fire marshal's office, the intersections as presented are adequate and meet their requirements. So therefore, we do meet the international fire code because the fire marshal signed off.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to follow up on the, on the Bell Mill at Hunter Road. We don't require all site improvements for current developments. Mainly, and one instance and one reason could, could be, and I think Mr. Price alluded to this, we do have a private property owner that owns property on the south side, that any, any realignment, and in fact, I think I even remember somebody making a comment that we may even have encroached on that property in just the years of trying to maintain an appropriate turning radius. And so we have entered into a process to survey and preliminary engineer a, a realignment that is one of Mayor Womp's initiatives moving forward to try to, to try to create some, some projects that, 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 you know, provide some additional, you know, alignments and, and safety when you're, when you're dealing with a, a road that's not at a perpendicular intersection. And so, again, going back to, to the comment about a realignment at Bell Mill, we do understand that that's an appropriate public road improvement. And so we are moving forward in doing that. It's just those, those concerns come around, having to deal with purchasing private property. But we have started that process.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Well?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted, one of the things that I wanted to say, following up to one of the ways that Mr. Price had stated it, that the international fire code is a living document, just like the majority of the building code. The fire marshal then being the authority having jurisdiction has the authority to interpret that code because like in many situations, code cannot possibly encompass the myriad complexities of topography and sites and things like that. So it's not like he's willy-nilly making some sort of just decision because it, you know, he is, he has the authority to do that and would have taken, you know, all the appropriate pieces into consideration, but there's the flexibility of the code. So I just don't want the public to misinterpret that, that comment to sound like it was, like it would have occurred, you know, kind of callously or anything like that.
In regards to case SD twenty twenty four dash zero zero three four, what's, I'm sorry, three, three, what's the, will the commission? Councilman Ledford?
Brian, let me make one last verification if I can. This does meet all of the requirements that this body is required to.
Yes, there were some corrections that needed to be shown on the plat. I could usually handle the final plat when that comes back in. As far as, you know, all the comments of stormwater, engineering, subdivision requirements, zone requirements, it meets all those requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to approve. We have a motion to approve, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next case on the agenda, item 10, S D 2024 dash zero zero three four. This is a variance for Hamilton County subdivision regulations. Article four, section 401.0401.11 and 402.1, urban farm subdivision lots two through 10, located at 10517 Le Highway, and staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present? Yes, sir. And is the applicant present? Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. Schultz?
Yes, this is 2024 34. This is a similar request. We've seen several times on the agenda today. It's a variance to section 402.1 of the Hamilton County subdivision regulations to create lots less than five acres on a private road. This development has 11 residential lots on Septic on a private road right of way. All 11, let's see, all the lots, 11 lots, there's two of them that are only over five acres. The rest of them are below five acres. They range in size in 2.6 acres to 4.8 acres. Therefore, a variance to this section will be required for the Hamilton County subdivision regulations, and staff has reviewed this and recommends to approve the variance request. The next case with this is a plat. This plat is right on the city limits of College Dale and the city of Chattanooga. I mean, sorry, Hamilton County. This plat, if the variance is granted, would meet the requirements of the sub regs, and staff recommends to approve.
Thank you, Chair. I recuse. Mr. Payne recused himself. Any questions for staff? All right, Mr. Price, are you okay with us hearing from the opposition first? If you're here in opposition, you'd like to speak, please come on up.
My name's Robert Thurman, and I'm, I'm not, I don't own the property beside it, but I'm representing Mineral Park Baptist Church, which is on 7134 Wyd Oak Valley Road. We don't necessarily oppose, but we just wanted the commission to be aware there's a creek that we share with the property right behind our church, really close to our church. And we own approximately in the, in the middle. It's like, we don't have the creek, and they don't have the creek. And we just wanted you guys to know, we didn't. We had concerns that maybe the creek would be a problem, and maybe not. But just wanted you to know that from June, about the middle of June till the last of August, that creek is usually dry most of that time, you know, depending on the rainfall. But that's all we wanted. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Price? There. We have a motion to approve. Councilman Ledford?
I'll, I will second that. Mr. Price, is that creek a waters of the state with a 60-foot buffer?
It is.
I, I thought so. So my second will stand. Thank you.
Waters of the state have a 60-foot buffer?
It is if it has a drainage area more than one acre, or if it is exceptional waters like trout streams, or if it is really impaired water such as certain creeks that have E. coli or, or other types of contaminants, then it gets a 60-foot buffer. This, it gets a 60-foot buffer because it has a drainage area more than one square mile.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion to approve, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case on our agenda, item 11, is S D 2024 dash zero zero four two, and this preliminary plat for urban farm subdivision lots two through 10, staff is recommended to approve with condition.
Mr. Chairman, that condition was approved, subject to the variance being granted.
Yes, thank you. What's well, the commission? We have a motion to approve, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case on the agenda is S D 2024 dash zero zero three five. This preliminary plat for Eli Road subdivision lots one through 28 and community lots 101 and 102, located at 614 Eli Road, and has a staff recommendation to approve. Is there any opposition present? What's well, the commission? We have a motion to approve, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case on the agenda is S D 2024 dash zero zero three six. This is a variance for the city of Chattanooga subdivision regulations. Section 401.1.7.1A Riverton Farm subdivision lots one through 38, located at 1100 Lupton Drive, and staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case on the agenda, item 14, is S D 2024 dash zero zero three seven. This preliminary plat for Riverton Farm subdivision lots one through 38, located at 1100 Lupton Drive, and staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present? What's well, the commission? We have a motion to approve, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case on the agenda, item 15, is S D 2024 dash zero zero three nine. This preliminary plat for Willow Creek subdivision lots one through 132 and community lots one through four, located at 10400 East Brainerd Road. Staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present? What's well, the commission? We have a motion to approve. It has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case on the agenda is S D 2024 dash zero zero four zero. This preliminary plat for West Shepherd Road, lots one through 32, located at 2155 and 2163 West Shepherd Road. Staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case is S D 2024 dash zero zero four one. It's preliminary plat for Dallas Crossing. Lots one through 47, located at 8348 Daisy Dallas Road, and staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present?
Mr. Chairman, this is in the city of Lakeside, and they would like to make sure that it's approved. It's approved with the conditions that some of the corrections be made, which we typically do anyway, prior to the final plat being submitted for approval. There's some civil engineering stuff that needs to be corrected.
How, how would we?
Approved, subject to the, the final plat showing the corrections as noted in staff report. Subject to the... Yes.
So we have a motion to approve, subject to conditions. It has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. I think that sets a record for the longest we've ever spent in preliminary plats before getting into new business.
Seventeen is a lot of subdivision plats. That's a lot.
It is.
That's a lot.
It's an awful lot.
It's a good, it's a good thing.
It is a good thing. Well.
Why?
Depends on who you are.
Well, true, true, true. The opposition probably doesn't like that.
Probably not. First item under new business is, it's item one. It's on our agenda, 2024 dash zero zero four eight, and this is located at 7712. And two unaddressed properties in 7700 block, standing for Gap Road. And it's an application rezone from R Z 1, Zero Lot Line Residential Zone to R 2 Residential Zone. Staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present?
Mr. Chairman, we did receive one email in opposition. I think we also received one in support as well for this. And the neighbors, I think it was reminded the neighbor is in support of this.
All right. Well, there's no opposition. We have a staff recommendation to approve. Councilman Ledford?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I get it out on the floor. We'll make a motion to approve. And then I did follow up with the applicant for, for a phone call, and also instructed the applicant to visit the homes on Apple Brook that were adjacent to this property and also next door on both sides. So that is why probably we have quelled any opposition in appearance today. We will work through some additional conditions if necessary, and I'll be tracking this on its way through the city council. So a motion to approve does stand.
We have a motion to approve, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda, item 200 new business, is a mandatory referral, 2024 dash zero zero four nine. And this is located at the 100 block of Willie Way in the city of Chattanooga. And it's a sewer easement abandonment, and staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case on our agenda is 2024 dash zero zero five zero, and it's located at 4416 Jersey Pike. It's an application rezone from R 1 to RTZ Zero Lot Line Zone, and staff is recommended to approve with conditions that there be one shared drive curb cut on Jersey Pike. Is there any opposition present? Is the applicant present? Are you familiar with the conditions that staff is? And you're okay with the condition? We have a motion to approve with conditions, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. Next case on the agenda is 2024 dash zero zero five one, and this is located at 1939 Central Avenue. And it's an application rezone from U G C to the new U G C, and staff is recommended to approve with conditions. Is there any opposition present? And, yes, ma'am. So we'll hear from staff first, and then the applicant, and then you'll have the opportunity to speak.
Yeah, that's one of those weird cases where it's U G C to U G C, but prior to 2022, you know, the U G C had a maximum, I think, building square footage of 12,000 square foot and a maximum height of four stories. That's since changed after August 2022. So in order to do something different, you have to now go through rezoning. That's why we have in front of you today. However, this property was rezoned to U G C with a condition of three stories when it was rezoned. You see on the screen, on the screen, to the north is U G C and M 1. To the south is M 1. To the west of this site is M 1, I mean, sorry, U G C. This is Burnside Development. And to the east across Central Avenue is M 1. So there is U G C in the area. This property to the north is a single unit residential. To the west, again, it's a Burnside mixed-use development. To the east across Central Avenue is commercial industrial office uses. And to the south is warehouse and vacant commercial. Here's a view of the site from Rossville Avenue. A view of the site from Central. This is a view north of the site. This is not part of the zoning request. This is one of the properties we'll talk about in a minute, but this is the single-family home just to the north of the property seeking the rezoning. This is south of the site. This is the intersection of Rossville Avenue and Russell Boulevard and Central. This is a view east of the site across Central Avenue from the site. This is west of the site, which is the Burnside Development. This property is in the, one of our most recent plan, which is the Historic River Ridge Plan adopted in 2020. And it recommends a mixed-use corridor with primary uses being multi-unit residential with at least 20 dwellings per acre. It also lists secondary units as well, but it does permit residential uses. Here's a closer view of that place type recommendation. There's a site plan that was submitted with a request. The request, with staff looked at this, request with conditions is compatible to adopted Historic River Ridge Plan. It is compatible with adjacent land uses and development form. However, staff does recommend a condition limiting the building height to the northern property line that is shared with 1931 Central Avenue, which is that home I showed a few minutes ago, to transition the form from a five-story to an existing one-story building. So staff recommended to approve with the following condition. The maximum building height of any portion of a building or structure within 15 feet of this shared property line located in 1931 Central Avenue is 35 feet. So it's a step back. So once you go 15 feet of that shared property line, the maximum height is 35 foot. Then you can go up, once you move away from that home. Just to provide protection and relief to that single-family home that I showed right here, that picture. So this comes to you with a recommendation from staff, approved with a condition.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Councilman Ledford?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brian, the current U G C status, does it have the step back or condition applied to it?
I know it does not. It does not. That's why we, that's why we're adding that condition.
As it stands right now, it could go four stories.
Five stories.
As it stands.
As I said right now, it's currently zone three, and the condition is three.
Hang on. Condition to three, right now?
Yes.
It'd be three stories. The new condition conditions it to match or up to 35 feet as a step up into the fifth.
Correct. Correct. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Alan Jones with Stone Creek Consulting, 1112 Wuthersfield Road in Dunlap, Tennessee. So with this project, this is a, a unique project that's going to come to, really, it's kind of the gateway to the Central Avenue, Rossville Boulevard area. Right as you get off the interstate, you know, this is a prominent corner. And if you look at the area plan that was adopted, actually, I think Brian mentioned, I think it was in late 2020, it calls for the site to be a five-story building. You know, with, and if you look at some of the surrounding U G Cs that have been rezoned in the past couple of years in this area, we see, we see a lot of the U G Cs without restrictions for, for, for development. The proposed site is a, it's a, it's a multi-use, mixed, mixed-use building, both residential and commercial spaces. It's kind of a donut-style design, if you feel, you know, use that term, you maybe help visualize that. With that, we've got ground floor parking that's screened from the streets, and then that will, and we'll have a kind of a community plaza space above that. In, in regards to the condition, our preference would be to, to remove that condition. If you look at the U G C requirements and setbacks and protections, it calls for a 10-foot requirement setback. When you look at, you know, if you look at the, the way the condition is written, 35 feet, that's within 15 feet of the property line, and then you can step up five stories after that. What they're, it makes it really challenging from an architectural standpoint to be able to kind of, because you're going to staggering your units once you get above the third story. This project's going to be capped at four stories. So once you get to that fourth story, you've got the same architecture on the second and third floor, but in that fourth floor, we're having to alter that 50, that five-foot setback essentially for those units. So our preference would be to just go with what's recommended in the U G C ordinance as far as protections go. If there's some pushback or hesitation, we would be open maybe just to a four-story max as opposed to going to that five-story max that's allowed in the U G C, maybe as a compromise for this site. But I, you know, but I think this site is going to create a great corner. I did reach out to the Neighborhood Association. The president, Michael Walker, responded back saying, I do not foresee any issues. And I think most residents will be happy and that you reached out. And also, the director for Neighborhood Services, Perrin Lance, also replied back with an email saying, great work for reaching out. I've, I hear the residents are excited about this project. So I'll just turn my time over to the opposition and respond after that.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
All right. Thanks. This is, I should have wrote this down. It's the one that's, that's a... I completely forgot. I'll look it up while... But this, this neighborhood association of this property falls within, and on the other side of Burnside is that, that neighborhood association that's predominantly over there. Yes, sir.
All right. If y'all would like to speak, now's a good time. Reminder to state your name and address for the record.
All right. Good afternoon. I will make a hug. And first of all, the paper I have on here, it says 1931, 1939 Central Avenue, and my address is 1931. So is this referring to my property, the property on the side? Thank you. Will you put that picture up there?
Is, is that, is that picture your property?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay. So...
The man on where the grass is, that's where they want to build? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's nineteen thirty nine. We want to know that will affect me going driving in and coming out of my, off of the street?
I have some questions to, to raise.
Yes, sir.
Some concerns. Since we have the address correct nineteen thirty one, but my, my name Robert Hogg, this is my sister. And first of all, will the applicant plan block both sides of the sidewalk as an entrance to and from the house at nineteen thirty one? That's the first question, all concern we have. Second is that will the applicant plan show the measurements of a neutral zone between the undeveloped area where they want to build and the lot of nineteen thirty one Central Avenue? Third, thus the applicant plan leaves neutral zone between the backside of the lot at nineteen thirty one Central Avenue and the undeveloped area? This, this information that they sent, it shows a little scrip of land. We had a garage in the back of our house. We tore it down years, years ago. So, and there was a right of way of an alley that go all the way down to Myrtle Street. When they, whoever took up the property and bought Myrtle Street, they took that, they took away the alley. That was, that was the city right of way or the county right of way. At that time, we didn't, we, I'm seventy something years old. I'm going back to the fifties and the sixties because I, I grew up there. But, but, okay, now, but the thing is, is that how much of that back part of our house they're going to take up? When we left today, they had someone took a stake and put it across the alley there. And they got two other state right there in the alley. But the alley's long gone. You have to use a surveyor, someone to come out there and mark off where our property is and the property that they, they are trying to use. And the other thing is that did the applicant use a surveyor from the Hamilton County City of Chattanooga Land Surveyor List? This list I have here. Or who surveyed the area for them to do what they are doing? But it's lots of gentrification going on throughout our country. And I want to know some, some, some answers. And other than if whoever he used on it was a friend or someone from this list that might have a little trust, I might have a little trust in him. And the last thing, who is Michael Walker? We've been living there for a long time. What association? And nobody can't come to us and receive a letter from no Michael Walker? Michael Walker do not, do not represent nineteen thirty one Central Avenue. We've been there all our life. And if he's somebody, whoever he is, I would like to meet him. My, my sister would like to meet him. So we got a lot to talk about. So those, that's those the questions. So all of this has been done, you know, in the last, I live out from Chattanooga since nineteen eighty five. But this is my sister and I'm going to make sure she's protected because we've been there. My father bought that property. Now you could buy all the rental property and the landlord who owned it. It's my father property and this is the, where we stayed, this is our roots right here. Now I'm going too far. Turn it back over.
I got a good brother. Take care of me. So now again, how much I will I be blocked in?
Well, we, we need, we do need to figure that out.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's what I need.
So can I, can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
So we see the house there, Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, nineteen thirty one, I believe, is her address, which is not part of this rezoning. It is nineteen thirty nine.
Yeah, I just want to kind of walk through these to make sure we address your questions and the concerns. Do you come in and out off of Myrtle Street? Or do you come in and off your property off of Central Avenue?
Off of Central Avenue.
Okay. Okay. I see.
I have to pull off.
Do you see where that little red cursor is? Is that where you come in and off, on and off your property?
If you're on Central Avenue, yes, I pull in in front of my house coming off of Central Avenue at that.
Right there. Right there, that's your driveway.
Wait, where the paved driveway is, I come in right there.
Okay.
Oh, a little bit fun, go back the other way. Come, you go and keep going. And you go into
Right here.
Yeah. I come in right over there on that paved parking lot.
Okay.
Park in front of the house. I have no other way to enter into my house but right there. And if you go down to Burnside Restaurant, I can come in that way. So if you building, how am I going to get in? Would that take up the paved parking lot?
Well, we're going to let the applicant answer this. I, I just wanted to make sure you, we understood how you were getting in and off your property. So that, that makes good sense. And then Karen, were you able to address the question about who this Michael guy is?
Because I just provided the site plan so they could reference it during the discussion.
I made the applicant, Michael, I think is the applicant, nineteen thirty nine.
Okay.
And not nineteen thirty one. Oh, neighborhood association, okay.
Okay.
The neighborhood association, I may have received a letter after their meeting sometime last year. But I never know when they are going to meet because I've never received a letter stating when they are going to meet. I have not met Michael Walker. Okay.
Burnside, is Burnside that little?
The Hispanic restaurant.
The Spanish one?
Burnside is behind your sister's property, the red brick behind your sister's house. That's Burnside.
That's Burnside.
You speak CCA then. Containing Corporation of America.
Councilman Ledford.
Just to clarify with staff, I believe Michael Walker is the head of Jefferson Heights Neighborhood Association.
Okay, that's across the railroad track. I'm not on that side.
Jefferson Street.
No, I understand. Just want to make sure you understood that information.
Is you have a, you have a contact number, this guy named Michael Walker?
Not me.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. So we could get involved if we're trying to do this.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you so very much. And you, I'm sorry, we will be contacted correct as to the results of what you all are going to do about me entering into my house. Because everybody on that side comes from Central Avenue.
We're going to find out right now from the applicant whether or not the work that they're doing is going to impede your ability to get in and off your property.
Thank you, sir.
And one other thing, the backside is very important because if she has to come in on, go around Central Avenue, right there with it, east-west twenty-four sign, that, that's kind of blocking part of her entry if she want to come in on that side. If she drive around to the back, she cannot, she won't have enough room to turn around and come back out where someone have put some states over across that.
Right. Right.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. I think I understand. Mr. Law?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brian, is there a history on that site in regards to whether there was an alleyway between Central and Myrtle? And whether there was an alleyway abandonment?
I don't recall. Doesn't look like there's one on the screen. Doesn't mean anything. Guess it's kind of GIS based maps. I don't know. Don't recall if there's one there. I'm trying to get the pictures and see.
It shows on the site plan that there is an alley. There's so I think
There's something right there.
Is that alley still?
Maybe Allen can speak to that.
Mr. Jones?
Great, thank you. To kind of address some of, some of the neighbors' concerns. So previous to the rezoning application, the property owner and the developer did make a couple of contacts in reaching out to the owner. Our understanding is this is a rental property that, that status may have changed. So I don't want to put that out there, you know, as a definite. But as far as access, we're not changing the access to this property one bit. This will, we're leaving the access from Central Avenue alone and we're not touching the alley. Um, the alley will remain open. So the, this rezoning is for just, you know, for this building and access to the building. And so access to this, to this, to this home will not be modified from its current condition today. It's just to speak on the surveyor and it's a private development. So they hired a private surveyor that's licensed in the state of Tennessee. So all the markings that you'll see out on site are where the, the true property corners are and alleyways and of that kind of nature. And just to clarify, Mayor, it is Jefferson Heights Neighborhood Association that's where this property falls. So just kind of trying to follow Chattanooga's kind of protocol, reaching out to the neighborhood associations. And obviously they don't speak for everyone, but they were very in favor of this project. But I'll be, be more than happy to answer any other questions.
I, I think the opposition also had some questions about the protected zone.
Yes.
And can you speak to that?
Absolutely. So the northern property line against this property will have a ten-foot landscape buffer requirement. You know, in the way that UGC ordinance reads, it's, it's, the ten-foot buffer is required against a residential zone or an existing single-family use. This property is zoned M one. So actually all, there's about six or seven homes up and down Central Avenue right here, dating back to the thirties. These are old, old kind of shotgun homes that were built for the kind of that industrial use. So these, these homes are built for the industrial use in downtown Chattanooga. So they are zoned M one. But since it is an existing residential use, we do have that ten-foot landscape buffer and setback requirement that we will be implementing.
And can, can
Yes, yeah.
And Mr. Chairman, that's where staff was coming from, on this condition, trying to protect that home to the north by limiting the height along that northern property line with that house.
But to that point, you know, it, it is a, the existing use is, is single-family. But it is manufacturing zone. So this could be reused as a commercial property at any point moving forward.
Yes, ma'am. Unfortunately, you are. Thank you for even asking. A lot of people don't. Any questions for the applicant? Councilman Ledford?
So obviously we have a little bit of a disconnect here. We need some conversation. So I hope that you all two get together and also get with our chair. Yeah, well, that, that, we'll solve that today, ma'am. Thank you. And then also bring in our chairwoman, Rukita Dolly. This is District Seven, so we can help have a full understanding and work through some of these answers as we move forward next month. So we do have some time before this moves on to city council to make this communication. I'm so glad you all came today to ask these questions. Thank you. I do want to address, Alan, you have objection to the case with a condition.
Correct.
Talk to me a little bit more about that and what does that do to your project?
Sure. So the condition, you know, it's interesting when I saw this condition, what I first thought was this is a form-based code condition being put onto a UGC zone. Because that's the exact sign of protective language you see in the form, form-based code language. But when you look at the architectural design of this building, so we can go, you know, ground floor is going to be commercial. Second and third floor is going to be residential and the fourth floor will be residential. You know, to meet, we can meet this intent, but from an architectural standpoint, you're going to have second and third floor identical just so you can have, you know, cost of efficiencies and having those units the same. When we get to that fourth floor, we're now having to step in that five feet. And so now you've got these different structural loads that are having to go through and transition out to the outside of the building. So from a, just from a design perspective, it, it's a challenging, a challenging approach. You know, if you look at the way the shadows of a five-story building fifteen feet are versus a four-foot building, ten feet off, I haven't done the modeling myself, but I would guarantee, I would, I would probably say that the shadows are probably very similar from a four-story building versus a five-story building that's only stepped back five feet. So from a massing standpoint, we're asking to actually put restrictions on that massing.
So let me ask you this question, Chair, if I may. So if you're next door and you were looking up, would you be able to tell what you have done from that point of view?
No.
That was my biggest concern there.
From that perspective, you're not going to tell if it's thirty-five and step five or if it's
Because you'll still see the fourth
Correct.
Level plain as day.
That's right.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Any other questions for the applicant? What's the will of the commission? We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Commission. Case twenty twenty four dash zero zero five two. It is located at part of an underdressed property in the sixty-one hundred block of Vance Road. And it's an application to rezone from R one to R three. Is there any opposition present? As a staff recommendation to approve. We have a motion to approve and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Twenty twenty four dash zero zero five three, located at three zero five Browns Ferry Road. It's an application to rezone from R two to C two. Staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present?
Mr. Chairman, we did receive some emails in opposition to this. I think you should have that in your Google sheets in front of you.
Thank you. What's the will of the commission? We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Case twenty twenty four dash zero zero five four, located at seven twenty-four North Market Street, unaddressed properties in the seven hundred block of Hamilton Avenue. Have an application to rezone from E R N three to E C X three. And staff is recommended to approve with conditions. Is there any opposition present? And are you familiar with the conditions? And are you amenable to them? What's the will of the commission? We have a motion to approve with conditions and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? Yes.
It came from the adjacent zones to this property, the north and south have the same conditions. We're just carrying that same condition through, which is part of this project.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case on the agenda, item eight is case twenty twenty four dash zero zero five five. And this is located at seven five two nine and seven six one one Ziegler Road. And it's for special permit for residential plan unit development. Staff is recommended to defer thirty days. Is the applicant present? And is there any opposition present? All right. And is the applicant amenable to deferring for thirty days? Okay. So what we'll do, because I saw some hands go up, the folks that are here in opposition. I think it would be helpful for us to hear your opposition. We will not take action. I, I mean, I, I don't want to speak for the entire planning commission, but we have a motion to defer and it has been seconded. So we, we will hear opposition, but we will defer it for thirty days. You've come, come here and you're welcome to speak.
I'm Tiffany Mathis. I live at seven five oh seven Ziegler Road. I don't necessarily know that there's so much of an opposition for this build based on some of the residents that we've spoken to. They weren't able to be here, so they may come for the next one since they're, you know, since they're, since it's being postponed. But what a lot of the residents' concerns are is the traffic that's there. You know, where this is, is, is on the corner. We all know that East Brainerd and Ziegler are extremely busy. And so whenever you come in on Joyner and Ziegler, there's been an increased traffic there because there's been some increased developments there, which is okay. But we're going to put another fifty unit there. And so that's just going to increase the traffic even more. There's a little bit of a safety concern for where the area is because whenever you go to Ziegler, it cuts around this corner and that corner will, cannot sustain the amount of traffic that's going to be added that's there. It's most certainly is a safety concern there. And then it's just not going to be able to, to utilize that. You know, we don't want to tell anyone not to do on what they need to do on their own property. But we would like to know what the considerations are going to be in that area for the increased traffic because there's already a lot there. You know, we also understand that there are supposed to be some lights going in at Joyner and or Ziegler and you there and, and it has, right, East Brainerd Road. And that hasn't been done yet. So we kind of want to know what the status is with, you know, like looking into the future because there's also that very large development there by RP construction. So how is that going to work in the mix for us residents in the influx of traffic that's there in the area?
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Ledford?
So thank you, Tiffany, for coming. I know we had a community meeting on this.
Oh, really? We didn't know about it.
Oh, yes. We had, there was a community meeting on this and
Yeah, we, we got nothing.
Okay. Okay, then I will definitely want you to talk to Caitlin back there.
Okay. No, no, what else did we talk to? Anyone anything about it?
Oh, yeah, this has been-
We had no idea.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, but there's, there was a, some notice went out. You can, and and talk to the applicant back there with the thumbs up. There you go.
Okay.
So one of the things that I wanted to let you give an, give you an update on is there is, in the condition for the project on Joyner and East Brainerd Road, there is a light that is in that project's condition. And now's a great time. Also, on my list are paving roads, since Mayor's to my right, he can hear me as well. That section of Joyner Road, as we tend to put a lot more density, packing it in there all the way to the end. There's actually requests for a cut through behind Wilkins Research that I'm working with them as well. So, so know that we're thinking about that and addressing that, but paving that, because that is a very, that's a very well-used cut through. And I will say, but-
People use it a lot.
But, but every time we do that, and I'll go ahead and say this for the record now, every time we do that, all we do is create more problems.
Right.
We create speed, and we need to think about mitigation on that as well. So while the mayor's here, and I'm looking, and we've got a meeting next week too to talk. That is one of the roads that I have on the list to to look at because of that, but we do not need to create a raceway.
No.
Because it is not conducive for that type of-
And Joyner, in between East Brainerd and Ziegler, where Joyner is, that has become a raceway. You know, when the road has tremendously decreased, and then the side goes around that half too, within those, and just kind of like that little block that's there. You know, so we understand that, you know, there's, there's more people that are living there, they're figuring out, you know, what the delay of the land a little bit and how to get through some of that traffic, but, you know, it it has created problems. And before we put more houses out there, we'd just like for some of those things to be addressed.
And I think that's a reasonable request, and it's obviously a concern that we hear a lot, and I'm really glad the mayor's sitting here today. So he can, he can hear it as well. So I appreciate it very much, so.
He doesn't want to talk, so.
That's okay. Tiffany, thank you, and and we're going to make contact back here. So we are, have a motion on the floor to defer this for thirty days, and we'll get you in contact with some more information.
Right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have a motion, and it has been seconded. Mr. Schultz, what was the reason for the staff recommendation?
There was some issues on the site plan about getting, I'll stop in real quick. The intersection here at CDOC or Transportation Department has some concerns, the intersection, the spacing of the entrance into this subdivision. And then to the right, this looks like a single-family home that's existing, cutting that off into a lot and getting access to that because this right-of-way doesn't come through, and how do you get to this third lot, which is the open space for this PUD? Just a different clarification on the PUD plan. I mean, I don't see any detention ponds. If detention ponds go in, you have to shift those townhomes. That could be a major change to the PUD. We want to clarify all that stuff before it gets approved.
Thank you. Caitlin, will all those be addressed in the next thirty days?
Hi, Caitlin Sims, Lobella Associates. My address is fourteen-twenty-six William Street. We do hope to address those. Unfortunately, we are late getting the staff report, so I would have addressed some of those prior to this. We did have early discussions with CDOC, who are not quite sure which staff were in this meeting. So again, some clarity that hopefully will be provided in the next thirty days. We did have a neighborhood meeting. We've received some great feedback and have a couple of conditions to offer next month. But we'll also meet with Tiffany today and see if we can qualm some concerns there as well.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case on the agenda is case twenty-two-four dash zero-zero-five-six, and this is located at nine-one-zero-one Hemis Road. And it's a special permit for assisted care living facility. Is there any opposition present? You're hearing opposition. Okay. We might take a recess. I think until what time? Three-ten. Okay, so we're going to take a recess from now until three-ten.
So this request does meet the site plan requirements, and there are no concerns with nuisance to adjacent property. So staff recommends to approve this special permit for assisted living on a portion of this overall site. No, with no conditions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Councilman Leford?
Thank you, Chairman. Brian, let me clarify a few things. So the area that outlined in black is the only area that is, the special exceptions permit is applied to.
Correct, for this assisted living. The remainder of the property is a PUD, special exceptions permit for a PUD for that development. The area in black with the orange building is the only area for this special permit for the system.
So this isn't the entire PUD, because that's already been-
That's already been approved.
And approved.
Correct.
Correct, okay. So this is just for that one building.
Correct, the six, the six-acre side of this property.
That's, okay. Want to make sure we're understanding what we're looking at. This isn't against the entire project. This is the one outlined unit.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Price.
I'll defer and let opposition go first.
Thank you. If you all would like to speak. Now would be appropriate reminder to state your name and address for the record.
We are Elizabeth and Ronald Ford, seven-nine-nine-one Prince Street, Udoa, Tennessee. We're here as neighbors, asking the planning commission a question respectfully. Have you performed your due diligence as it concerns the history of the Thrive Senior Living Center? It would appear that our new neighbor, Thrive, is a real estate investment trust or an REIT, R-E-I-T, otherwise known, specializing in assisted living and memory care-supported facilities for the elderly. Mr. Ragsdale, the CEO of Thrive, has previously stated that they have operated forty-three facilities since their conception of this company eighteen years ago. However, the Thrive website currently shows only nine current operations on their website. The question is, what has happened to the other thirty-four facilities? Nine of forty-three equals twenty-one percent. What happened to the other eighty-nine percent? Here's what we do know. Six facilities have disappeared when Thrive stepped away and defaulted on a two-point-six-million-dollar payment. This was in twenty-nineteen, pre-pandemic. Another Thrive facility in Port Orange, Florida, known as Grace Manor in Port Orange, Florida, was closed because of abuse and was fined by the State of Florida several tens of thousands of dollars. Being a private company, Thrive's structure is not open to review. Mr. Ragsdale has several LLCs under his name, such as Ragsdale Healthcare USA, Thrive Ventures LLC, and Thrive in OCO, O-C-O, Bay LLC, et cetera. Thinking people would ask, what could be the reason for these companies all under the umbrella company of Thrive? This could be accounted for by saying this is done for tax purposes or either an obscuration of accountability. This begs the question. Have our elected commissions officials done your due diligence in vetting this or any other prospective enterprise that has come to our community with big talk and big plans for us, the residents, and your constituents? In summary, the big question is, who will be our neighbor in five or ten years? And all the information that I have mentioned can be found in Google University online. Thank you for your attention to this matter. It is greatly appreciated.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Well, I guess I'll jump in with addressing that. You know, ours, ours at the planning commission level is not to vet your neighbor in terms of who occupies that property anymore, so than the planning commission would vet my neighbors, which I would very much like them to do. I don't know if you've actually met some of them, but I did some research on them, and I found very similar information on my neighbors and have some grave concerns. But unfortunately, planning commission's not in the position to act on behalf of, you know, my interests or yours in regards to who your neighbor is. So, you know, we're here today only to rule on whether or not a special permit can be granted by this planning commission for an assisted care living facility, whether or not that's Thrive or somebody else, really is not a part of our decision-making process any more than it is when a grocery store comes in, whether it's a Food Lion or a Publix or a Walmart. It, it is not a part of our decision-making process who the tenant or the the neighbor is specifically. So with that, yes. Mr. Price, do you have anything to add?
Well, I would just add that certainly we can all do a lot of research online in a number of different topics, and I bet we can dig up whatever you want to find out there. So just because you read it on the internet doesn't make it true. Just because you see information that may be damaging in regards to any individual or corporation doesn't make it true either. Or does it always shed the proper light and context in which we find these things? So my own dealings with Thrive have been that they are an upstanding developer and have been a good client to this point, and I can promise you, in the number of years that I have represented developers, I can get a pretty good sense early on if somebody is reputable or not, and I don't get that job here whatsoever. So I would just point out that this plan was approved by the county commission. This is in keeping with the PUD plan and its procedural matters. It relates to the request as it relates to the assisted living facility. So hopefully that would garner your support. Is there any questions happening to answer?
Thank you. Councilman Leford?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brian, can you go back? Thank you. So to be clear, and the reason I'd ask this question, and I appreciate you all coming down and sharing your opinions and your thoughts, because that's, that's a lot to do on a day to the courthouse coming from, from the Udoa area. But understand the jurisdiction of which we operate under is, right now, today, this outlined in this, what's up on the screen for that particular building, that is what we are focused on. We don't, we do not even have the jurisdiction to, to address any of those concerns. And appreciate the mayor chiming in. He was absolutely correct in where that jurisdiction does lie. So I apologize if we can't help you in that regard, but given that, I do make an motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next case on the agenda, item ten, this case twenty-two-four dash zero-zero-five-seven, this is located at fifteen-zero-four Wheeler Avenue. And it's an application to rezone from R1 to RTZ, and staff is recommended to deny. Is the applicant present? You're the applicant? And is there any opposition present? All right. Mr. Schultz?
Sure. This is twenty-two-four fifty-seven. This is a request to rezone from R1, single-family residential to RTZ for zero lot line residential. This property is roughly zero-point-three acres, zero-point-three acres in size. Number of units proposed is two, and that's a density of six-point-six dwellings per acre. Looking at zoning map on the screen, you see, see no RTZ in this area. It's all zoned to R1 to the north, southeast, and west of this property. There's been, this property was downzoned in two thousand and four as part of the Avondale zoning study. That was zoned R3, that was downzoned again two thousand and four. It's currently a single-family dwelling on this property. To the north is a two-unit residential, to the south a single-unit residential, and to the east, a single unit, and to the west across Wheeler Avenue is a single-unit residential. Now, this property is about one-hundred-and-fifteen feet to the north of Wilcox Boulevard. Here's a view of the structure that's on the site. Another view of the site. North of the site, single-family dwelling. South of the site. This is west of the site. This is looking at Wheeler Avenue. This property is located in historic River Ridge Plan, again, which was adopted in twenty-twenty. The plan or place type recommendation is urban residential, the single-family only overlay. Primary uses include single-unit detached and detached ADUs only. So here's a closer view of that property. You can see the crosshatching that indicates that overlay. There was a site plan that was submitted with a request. Again, this is just a conceptual site plan, but the site plan cannot be developed as shown on the, on the screen. It's creating two lots, with a lot, the line down the middle is the separation between the lots, lot one and two. Lot two, if you will, has no public street frontage. It does not front a public road. In order to get a building permit, every residential lot in the city of Chattanooga must run a public road. And you can see on the bottom left-hand side, aerial view of the site, there is no alley or any other road to provide access to this lot. So the RTZ zone would not be appropriate at this location. Again, the plan recommendation is a single-family detached dwelling overlay. It is interesting to note that this is two lots of record, lot three and four, and I've highlighted on the screen. So in theory, you can do two single-family dwellings and two ADUs on this property. So staff recommends to deny this request primarily, no lot frontage for the, for the lot, but you can do more units based on the current lot configuration.
Come on up.
Lance Spencer, twenty-five Bridge Rock Road. So, yeah, it's two lots of record, so we're really, we were only talking about the second half of the lot that is vacant now currently. And the idea is not, it's, it's to do two single-family homes instead of doing a, a single-family and ADU. And the idea is to work with the city to allow, and I'm speaking over myself here. So I've already talked to the councilwoman, Noel. I've talked to the neighborhood committee. They were all okay with this idea. I understand, and I'm more looking for feedback than anything. The idea is to make these into two lots, build new construction, sell to low-income housing. So the city is starting to work with the program, trying to work with the city too as well, Nicole from the city. So the idea is to work with people on the new construction to be able to afford these houses through the city. Most of the new construction houses in this area and among a lot of the areas in, in these infill lots are going to developers. They're going to people that use them as rentals. This is complete opposite of that. I am doing new construction. I want to do new construction, but they are going to be allocated if people actually move- but they are going to be allocated to people actually moving into the houses. So I did meet with them. No, this might be a little early, but I've been told to come here. There is an alley in the back. I don't know if it's a public alley, but I, I know on this one for sure there is an alley in the back. It may not be shown there, but my, the intense, the intention on this is to take these lots, almost divide them into two and build two single-family homes on here. At no point do I want to do townhomes. I'm not looking to do townhomes, only SFRs on these lots, period. Which is what the councilwoman Noel and the, the neighborhood commit, committee was okay with.
The issue is that you, you can't build single-family homes in that configuration. Mr. Maybe. You cannot do HPR and, or.
Nope.
RTZ.
Has to be a R three zone. And you cannot use an alley. Use it for secondary access, but not your primary access.
But I will say that you can build a house much in the same way that you're thinking about doing it. You can also build an ADU. By right.
Yes.
So while that, I know your plan is not for it to be a rental property, that it would be a for-sale property. The ADU can provide additional income to the tenant in the future that makes the property even more affordable. So one way to think through it while you're, and I, I know you mentioned that you're working with Nicole, and I think that's fantastic. And Noel, and, and trying to figure out how to solve for some of the problems that we have in regards to affordable housing. I would encourage you to look at a plan where you build a unit that also has an ADU on it so that the future family that's moving there, that can now afford it because of the, the ways that you've made it possible, can have the income off of that ADU.
Mr. Chairman, if these are two lots of records, they appear to be, you can do two single-family dwellings, one on each lot.
No, the house, the house, I.
I know, understand.
Yeah, I'm not planning on removing the house, so that, I get that. I know I can do two houses. My, my, and, and this is good for me because I, I'm, again, I'm trying to do this. I, my, my goal is to probably do this all over the city. Right? So if the biggest issue is frontage and if, so alleyway does not count, correct?
Right.
Is, is there a way to put an easement on the front to allow access from the front, like on the side? You can't do that either.
No, each lot has to front a public road.
So it has to be a through, through lot then?
And you'll see, he has three other cases.
Yes.
One case we recommend approve because it does have secondary access. The other two cases do not. Similar situation as this. I totally have a recommendation to deny.
Yeah. Do you have an engineer that you're working with yet?
I do.
You mind me asking?
I, I, I don't know it off the top of my head, but.
So I, I would lean hard on the professionals that are in your circles to just get a good understanding of what the zoning code is and what the building code is and what opportunities you might have to solve for some of these problems. And we're super glad that you're trying to figure out how to solve for them.
Absolutely.
Would it be wise for him to withdraw this so we don't take action? So then you can get this worked out, bring it back. If we were, if we vote against it, you're, you're out for a year.
That's at city council level. It'd be nine months, but it can't, I mean, I, I would suggest he withdraw the three. We got approval for one.
Withdraw the ones they recommended against.
Yeah, and to me, I, I'm okay. I, I appreciate this because again, I do want to buy other properties. And so what I'm hearing is, is again, then we can wait till the next one, when we reach the next one. So I'll withdraw this one.
We have a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw it, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case on the agenda is case twenty-two four dash zero zero five eight. And this is located at two eight zero seven Curtis Street. Staff is recommended to approve a rezoning request from R one to RTZ subject to certain conditions. And those conditions are a single-unit detached dwelling only, townhouses multi-unit, up to four units and zero lot line residential uses are prohibited. Are you amenable to that?
Absolutely. That's all I'm trying to do anyway, so.
Move to.
We have a motion to approve the staff recommendation. It has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
That site plan doesn't work.
Yeah, I have to have a driveway off the back.
Yeah. And again, I, I think this is the difference in other three cases. This one here, if you look on the screen, does have furniture on North Chamberlain and Curtis. And we put on here the site plan as shown. Again, these are just zoning concept plans. It's not built the way it's shown.
Absolutely. So just have a driveway on the back. Yeah, so I, I appreciate it. Again, just trying to learn. So if it's a through, if it's a lot that goes street to street, I should be here. If it's not, don't waste my time. Is that, is that pretty fair? Okay.
Or look for other options. Just don't, I wouldn't say don't waste your time.
I got it. Like do the, the SFR with the ADU in the back.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case on the agenda, twenty-two four dash zero zero five nine, twenty-two four dash zero six zero. I think these are very similar cases.
Withdraw.
Move to withdraw.
We have an applicant that has requested to withdraw it, and planning commission has made a motion to allow that withdrawn. It has been properly seconded for both cases. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
One more? Okay, just making sure. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have staff updates.
Sure. I know Emily talked about this in a second if she wants to, but we're, uh, just, you'll be seeing this probably next month or so, working with Hamilton County departments on creating a new zone for the county zoning regulations, a park zone, if you will, thinking that this zone primarily will be used for McDonald Farm, but once it gets adopted, it can be used throughout the entire county. But looking at creating some type of park, open space zone that would provide some clarity on type of uses in terms of park facilities for McDonald Farms, McDonald Farm, if you will, is going to be at a zoning case two, three months ago. That was substantially withdrawn at city or county commission because there was some fears from the neighborhood and citizens of what do you mean by the park? So we want to clarify through a new zone what that is. And so we're meeting tomorrow, I think, with some departmental staff to start that draft discussion. So they'll be coming, hopefully this body, perhaps next month or the month after that.
Brian, I mentioned earlier that the case that we heard earlier where we had the opposition to the plat, and it was, the guy got up at the end and said he was an attorney. And I, I did realize after the fact that we heard that case out of order in that I heard from opposition before we heard from the applicant, which meant that the time that I was seeing was based on seven minutes. And so it was actually the case that the opposition did not get the nine minutes. And so I think it would probably be worthwhile to consider with as much, you know, issue as we've had around that case, to at least recognize that I was out of order in that technically the opposition did not have nine minutes. They had seven minutes because I don't, I don't think we were all on the same page that I was hearing from opposition and not the applicant when I was watching the clock.
And I, and I asked the applicant if he wanted to come up and speak before they, he was, he was okay speaking after.
Right. So it's fine to have it out of order, but do, do we want to do anything in particular with that? Knowing that we do have as much, you know, opposition to it and knowing that we were out of order and the fact that we didn't hear, I didn't know, I didn't allow them the nine minutes. I just want to put that on record. I only allowed them seven. The attorney that wanted to speak couldn't speak. Former attorney.
We'll get a legal opinion because I mean, I think I'd almost speak for them, but that probably, it was the same comments, I'm thinking.
Well, I guess, I guess that I did mention it to the applicant during our recess, and he said that he didn't care. Put it back on the agenda as another preliminary plat next month. Get, let him come back up.
Okay.
Let him speak for the full nine minutes.
We can do that. We'll reach out to him, let him know to come back. If the applicant's good with that, we'll.
Okay.
I think that's, that's a good suggestion.
Or do, what do you? I, I don't know. I just want to point out the fact that I know I was out of order.
Yeah.
So.
Yes.
Would it have a, would it have a negative impact on them if we did reconsider it? Rather than it go into court and somebody saying, the chairman didn't give us our nine minutes. We know I didn't give.
I don't see anything that's going to hold him up. They can go ahead and start, if they want to, start submitting for land disturbing permits. Because this doesn't go to county commission. There was no barriers.
Do we need to reconsider?
I think reconsider. I think I'd make a motion to rescind, or not rescind, but have it come back up next meeting.
As a preliminary plat again?
Yes.
So we've already, so you rescind the approval of the preliminary plat?
I don't know if you rescind.
Reconsider.
Reconsider it.
Can we, can we do that at the next meeting and not do it? You make them aware that if they petition will, will make a motion to reconsider and then they'll have nine minutes? I mean, I'm just asking. So you're saying if they don't show up, it would move. I mean, I think you ask them. If they want to. If they want to, they can petition to have us reconsider.
Do you want us to reach out to the opposition, say error was made, you needed two more minutes if you want to come back and may? Or we've got to have it on agenda?
Well, I would say that the, the chairman has made the comment that the planning commission intends to reconsider to make sure they have appropriate time, but they'll need to make sure that, I mean, there's no need in us reconsidering it, having it on the agenda next week, next month, and nobody, and them not really caring to say something else. I mean.
And it was a preliminary plat. I mean, it'll still be back on the agenda for a final.
For final, yeah.
I just hate, I'd hate for that to be the cause of future drama because.
Are there any attorneys in the room? It's called good faith.
Yeah.
I heard that the other day and offering a compromise. Good faith.
I don't think it hurts to have it come back up.
I wouldn't think so either.
I wouldn't think so either. Since we're not really in any, if it's going to county commission, I would say yes, it may be a hindrance, but since it's not, I don't see any reason not to put it back on the agenda for next month.
Well, so long as it's on the record, I recognize I screwed that up. Sorry about that. Is there any public comment on unaddressed items? Can I get approval of the planning commission minutes of March eleven, twenty twenty-four? We have a motion. It has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I understood that you guys had a hard time.
We, we couldn't do it. I, I, I leaned up Mr. Maybe and he, he was like, he was like all over the place. Just standing there looking at each other. I moved to a jury.
Thank you.